Going into our committee presentations. Okay, welcome to our work session. Our work session today is to discuss committee recommendations from two committees. The Superintendent Evaluation Committee as well as the Superintendent Transition Plan Committee. Is that the right name of your committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any preference on who goes presents first?
You go first.
Okay, awesome. I do. Matt, if you do not want to stick around, you don't have to.
There is one question.
What's that?
Matt, just if you could share, I think we have an outstanding inquiry for evaluation framework. Would I not send that to you? We wanted to make sure, so we're looking at evaluation, that we're accomplishing what it is this time.
Yeah.
Do you have a performance?
Thank you.
All right, in front of you, you have two documents from the Superintendent Evaluation Committee. One document kind of goes over what we discussed, and then the other document is a draft of the actual evaluation tool itself. So as a committee, we discussed what we would like the evaluation to focus on, and where we landed were three items. You'll see goals, guardrails, and organizational health. The committee defined organizational health based on really what we're hearing from our community, as well as kind of what we're hearing from staff alike. So we are recommending that organizational health be separated into two separate categories, one being strategy and the other being personnel and a culture of excellence. So first, under organizational strategy, you'll see, and I'm looking at the, this document here, sorry, the one that is entitled Committee Recommendation. So under the bullet point that said recommended focus areas, organizational strategy, we are recommending that the superintendent will demonstrate effective strategy, long-range planning and management of the district. We felt that we've been lacking as a district in some areas. We've been lacking in a collective vision, a comprehensive multi-year strategic plan, and you can see the additional bullet points there. We've identified as a board and superintendent governing body, a desire to write a vision statement. So we've included that, as well as something that we've been lacking is a program return on investment review. So those were the kind of the key items that what we felt we were hearing was lacking from the standpoint of organizational strategy, and why we felt it was important to not only include the goals and guardrails in the evaluation, but also something around organizational strategy. The second item that we felt strongly about was personnel and a culture of excellence. And the reason for that is we have been hearing, as many of you have been hearing, is that there are concerns around human resources, their processes, their functions as a whole. Not knowing the ins and outs, we felt that appropriate review of human resources was warranted based on what we're hearing from the community, implementation of a systemic performance review process. We heard a little bit about that during our monitoring today. And then to collect and review quantitative exit interview data and analyze staff retention based on that exit interview data. Committee members, do you have anything else that you'd like to add to organizational strategy and personnel and a culture of excellence?
No, I think one of the inputs that seems to have gotten overlooked, and I'm not sure it was intentional, Kim, is we did have in this collection of items that the board had expressed interest to go into the community to review board goals at some point in 2023.
That is, that is the board evaluation, not the superintendent evaluation? So I did remove that intentionally, as we're not going to evaluate the superintendent on that. We're going to evaluate ourselves on that.
No doubt. I think it's, but if I understood you correctly, you wanted to be part of the vision. The board wanted to be part of the vision.
So I'm just trying to understand. To write that DNPS vision statement as a governing body, yes, I believe that that would be, I believe that that would be a necessary first step, yes.
Whose responsibility is to do a DNPS vision statement?
The board, the governing body as a whole. So, but we as a board have said that we want to, the eight-member governing body, so superintendent and board, will collectively write that vision statement. We as a board have agreed that we don't want to do that, I believe, informally, until we've gone out to listen to the vision and values of the community.
Okay. I'm not saying he's responsible for community goals. When we originally wrote this, I think we were trying to outline multiple inputs that he would need to factor in in creating an effective strategy, long-range planning and management of the district. So as long as we're not discounting in all of the inputs that he's going to be considering, that the board has expressed interest in going into the community to assess goals in 2023.
Yeah, and I just don't, I don't want to include in our, in what our responsibility is in his evaluation tool. So forgive me, I, I did remove it intentionally. My intent was not to remove that from the process, though.
Great, thank you.
Anything else that you'd like to add regarding our why?
I think just to highlight, when we started at a really high level, Kelly, Kim, and I, to identify where were some of the collective pain points, things that we felt all surfaced in the interview process. And so that's how we got to this list of two and potentially three. The reason there's not three is because part of this is understanding that there's a lot to do and there needed to be some prioritization. I think it would be helpful to hear back from the board to see if they generally agree with one and two.
Yeah, so then you'll see under those two items, organizational strategy and personnel and culture of excellence, there isn't that additional focus area, which we as a committee are not recommending, but we wanted you to be aware that we discuss this in length and know that this is also one of those areas of concern, is community relations and communication. It's an area that we struggled with from the standpoint of previous leadership. So you'll see that that was something that, again, we think that it's important that that exists, but we also don't want to, you know, if we're focused on everything, we're focused on nothing. So we want to make sure that in year one, we're giving stretch attainable goals.
I was, I was just going to offer that it feels like community relations and communications really sort of folds into organizational strategy and, you know, sort of recognizing that the superintendent is going to be doing his own listening and learning. It feels like this is just a natural outgrowth of that process. So I can anticipate that somewhere along the line, without calling it out specifically, it will be embedded. But to the extent we feel the need to elevate that in a subsequent year, we have the capacity and the opportunity to do it while sort of our two top priorities are being addressed. So I'm comfortable with, with that sort of as an outlier and something that we can circle back to as needed.
I just want to lift up, this is a side topic, something that stuck out from when we did our listening session with the community partners, when we were kind of looking for a new superintendent, when we were doing our listening sessions for the superintendent search. And, you know, you're in this room with like 50 different organizations, right, that are partners of Des Moines Public Schools. And someone shared their, that we call ourselves a community-based school district, right? And like how we, we value that. And that was sort of the first time I'd heard it in that context to really make me think like, hmm, we really should be good, you know, if we tout, right, that we're this community-based school district, that we need to be really mindful of that. And so, not that I'm suggesting that it, it's, I agree with you, you can't do everything and solve everything in one year, but I do think that it does warrant us being more mindful of walking, walking the talk that we say a lot. And I, I think a lot of people feel like we don't show up for everyone, but we want everyone to show up for us sometimes, so something to be mindful of.
Thank you. Any, any questions, concerns regarding kind of what we've highlighted here under organizational health?
I just want to point out, and Kim, maybe this is where you're going. It took a little bit of back and forth to ensure that we weren't saying, as an example, write a strategic plan. And so I think we did a good job, like trying to keep it broad enough so the superintendent can interpret how best to do that, but also trying to be as clear as possible about what some of the board identified pain points were.
Well, I think that that in some respects for the superintendent is going to be sort of his ability to differentiate strategy from tactics and how that applies when implemented based on sort of priority number one. So I think we need to be thoughtful about our expectations in that regard. And I think if we can be clear, he can be clear. So if there are some nuanced things that we want to make sure we lift up as we're walking through these, I think it's important that he know that and that we're able to explain sort of the difference that we see.
Kelly or Kim, because we talked about how specific versus not and the opportunity for him to have, there is a back and forth conversation around that. Do either of you want to speak to that? Because I feel like we discussed that a little.
Yeah, I, we grappled with this quite a bit. I, having, having an outcomes-focused hat on, I, I don't want to be super rigid with those inputs. I don't want to say, well, you have to do this in order for us to get to a collective vision. I think in our minds, we think, well, we've been missing a strategic plan. We've been missing this collective vision. But perhaps just writing a strategic plan is not going to get us to a unified collective vision. So we didn't want to be so prescriptive in saying the superintendent, you know, by the end of year one will have written and implemented a strategic plan because that may not be true implementation of identification of a vision. So I guess that speaks to a little bit of how we, how we've gone back and forth. We certainly could say very easily, we want a strategic plan, we want a vision statement written, we want, you know, facility master plan, we want, I just, I think that, again, with my, my outcomes-focused brain or hat on, I, I think ultimately we need to think about what it is that we want from those items. What is it that we want from those plans? What is it that we want to achieve that has been missing over the last, under the last leadership, so? And I feel like he, I feel like he will have thoughts and ideas around this too. And questions, and will certainly dialogue around that. I don't want to put it by him that he maybe already doesn't know or think through what might be next steps. Like, I don't want to have to spoon-feed him because he's a smart man and I have confidence that he will be able to ask questions and, and assess the situation as is.
I also felt that, and I thought it was on August 8th, but maybe it's on August 22nd, and it's just missing focus areas. I felt like we had intentionally said there's, there's a point in time, likely in August, where there can be back and forth. So just like he may be looking at certain interim measures and saying, hey, I don't really like that one. Can we talk about it? So he still has the review, so it's a year in advance, so you adhere to being able to have a full assessment. But I felt like we had offered a couple of input opportunities so he could say, to me, it looks like this, what do you think? And there's a kind of a little bit of a conversation around that.
So Jackie has moved to the page, page two of that document. What we are recommending is that we have three check-ins over the course of the next year that prepare us for the state-required deadline of April, pardon me?
May 7th, isn't it?
I thought it was May 15th it had to be done, but we
May 15th, yes, yes. Thank you. So this timeline outlines kind of not only the superintendent's evaluation, but also the board evaluations. And we are preparing for another one of those evaluations that will be for our quarter two here coming up. So this outlines both of those, including the check-ins. Again, these are recommendations based on kind of when we felt we wanted to have those preliminary conversations with Dr. Roberts, when we wanted to, we wanted to give him enough time to actually provide us with artifacts. You'll notice the check-in agenda at the very bottom of this document. We are wanting Dr. Roberts to provide us for, you know, we're doing monitoring of the goals and guardrails all year long as a part of our monitoring process. But for the check-ins on the organizational health of the, of the evaluation, we're going to be asking for artifacts that provide strength areas, opportunities, as well as discussion with the superintendent and board regarding potential challenges and needs in the coming months to achieve success. So that's kind of how we felt those conversations could go. Any questions or concerns there?
I think it's going to be really important for us to figure out how best to align and merge our monitoring calendar with our check-in calendar so that there is alignment and continuity and we're not in a position where sort of the tail is wagging the dog. We haven't done this, and so because we don't have that, we can't do this, so.
Yeah, and we, we discussed that as well. We were thinking that during those check-ins, we're not discussing goals and guardrails because those goals and guardrails were discussing at the board table per that monitoring calendar. So if there's concerns regarding those, those goals and guardrails, they need to be brought up in accordance with that monitoring calendar. That was our thought, is that those check-ins would be specific to the organizational health and those focus areas that we identify.
I also wonder if there are specific metrics that he'll need to rely on to sort of provide the artifacts and to represent sort of the proof. And again, being able to align all of that in a way that is sequenced and recognizes that there's a seasonality to our work, to our assessments, to our data gathering, et cetera, that somehow needs to align back to this. So what I might recommend is that we also sort of task him with developing the schedule so that we're not dictating, but rather it's aligned with sort of the natural flow of operations and other information that's critical for him to stay on track.
So I agree with that. I think the only thing I want to make sure that I think is really important, especially with a first-year superintendent, is that we have three check-in opportunities prior to formal evaluation. These are supposed to be forward-focused, positive-intent check-ins that are designed to kind of set up a no-surprises culture. And so I would just say as long as we can keep a cadence of having three check-ins before the formal evaluation.
Is that a closed, like how does that work?
Closed session.
Closed session, yep. All evaluation happens in closed session. The contract gets approved, of course, in open session, but not evaluation.
Kim, I think you, it's, maybe it's here somewhere. Do you want to quickly address the evaluation?
Yeah, so, and know that the committee did run out of time. So the next document that you'll see with the color coding at the top is kind of the draft of what the actual final evaluation would look like. So page one. Yeah, for sure.
Can you table that? I have a question on this. Is there a reason you chose optional 360 evaluation?
I put the timeline together, and in the past, we haven't always done a board 360. It's not for superintendents, it's for us as a board. And so that was just one of the things, I wasn't sure if we would want that in, in this process. I'm trying to think if, were you guys?
No.
Okay, so it was the previous board that we did a 360 prior to superintendent eval. So if we wanted to do that, I put that in as optional, as do we as a board want that 360? We need to have that done before we go into evaluation with our superintendent. So just that has to be very cognizant and aware of that timeline, so.
So Jenna, to be clear, you're not speaking of the superintendent 360 in this?
Is that on there?
It's not, and I think it shouldn't be. Not to say that it's not something that they should do, but 360s are not typically evaluative, they're professional development.
Agreed.
Right, so I think if that is an expectation that he's doing one in year one, it just has to be stated somewhere else. Yeah, February 20th is for the board 360.
Well, I think both. I think it's great, I think everyone should just do a 360 all the time. So I'm interested in, I'm interested in both conversations, I guess.
So I do think that the board 360 is important. Does it preempt our regular self-evaluation that we're doing in that year? I don't know. But it feels like a board 360 is not an annual requirement. The frequency is for us to determine based on, you know, whatever we believe our feedback loop needs to be and the frequency of it. I also wanted to just offer that the superintendent 360 is an external process. There was a time when, years ago, we did it internal, but we shifted that to be more of an external process that the superintendent manages. But it feels like if nothing else on the 360s, whether it's board or superintendent, we need to establish the appropriate cadence. Is it every two years? Is it every three years? And that, to me, is sort of the key deliverable that I think we need to articulate. So there's no question about frequency.
So it, it feels like that should then go into our policy manual. So perhaps we can, I'm happy to draft something up for that, for review, for future review.
Can we ask for best practice on, I'm just always sensitive to 360s for first-year leaders. I'm curious, I'm curious what the research says about if year one is the right year to do a 360 for the leader of an organization or year two. So maybe if we could ground that in some general research or expertise.
Any additional questions on this document before we move on to the other? Okay, the other document that you'll see with the color coding at the top, page one, is a list of all of our goals and interim goals. Essentially, this is where we would just plug in what the target was for the year for each of those and what the actual data was. And then we would identify, was it met or not met? Or how many of those interim, so example, for example, goal one, how many of the interim goals did we meet? I put them all in green as having to be on track. I'm just putting that into the universe. The next page is our guardrails and all of the interim guardrails that currently exist. We would do a similar, very much just data-based. So the data, the act, you know, our projected, the actual, and did we meet it, yes or no? Followed by the third area, which is our organizational health. So that's added in along with those high-level items that we felt we should be evaluating, that collective vision, may I borrow this?
Oh, my goodness, of course, please.
The collective vision, the strategic plan, the vision statement, the program return on investment, human resources, systemic performance review, and exit interview process and data analysis. And then we, I have a portion or a place where, in fact, we can identify if the, the check-in one, check-in two, and check-in three were unsatisfactory, needing improvement, developing, proficient, or exemplary. And then a suggested weighting for the three areas of the evaluation. And again, like I said, the committee did run out of time. We did not discuss this weighting in length. So I would love to hear from everyone at the board table about the weighting that I've proposed here, which is 50% of the evaluation is on meeting goals, 30% is on meeting guardrails, and the remaining 20% is on meeting the organizational health focus areas.
Well, I would just offer that the weighting allows us to consider the X-factors that a sheer SOFG implementation doesn't allow for. And I think that has been the place where we've struggled a lot around evaluation. So I do agree that our goals and guardrails should get the greatest weighting, but being able to factor in the other two components, I think, is not only realistic, but I think consistent with what we have discussed feeling like we need to do to round out the evaluation. So I'm, I'm supportive of that.
Thank you.
Sorry. I am throwing a wrinkle in this. As I'm looking at his contract, we're off calendar.
Oh, for the timeline?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have to adjust some dates. According to the contract, honor, before the first regular meeting in the month of February, the board shall complete a summative evaluation.
Okay.
So there'll be some adjustment to this calendar.
Sounds good, thank you for pulling that up.
Kim, just for clarification, especially for people that haven't gone through the evaluative process, the weighting is the weighting, let me say it differently. How does the weighting actually correlate to retain, terminate salary and compensation? Maybe just explain the?
So there's a separate committee that discusses salary and compensation. That committee meets after we've had kind of the preliminary conversation and plugged in all the, plugged in all of the numbers and have done all of the, filled in all of the areas of the evaluation itself. So as a board, we fill this in, and then that committee uses that to drive the conversation around compensation and contract recommendations. From the standpoint of, are you wanting to see like what an actual filled-in form would be and how, how the numbers would impact?
No, I guess I have maybe two thoughts. One is, is it a binding?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's binding. What I would offer is it's a conversation starter that allows us to have the kind that allows us to have the kind of conversation we need to have about whether or not what we've seen is consistent with what we had hoped, but also if there is room for improvement, how that's articulated and taken into consideration. So I would say, just like any, you know, sort of evaluation, this is a starting point for a group conversation and discussion. But it doesn't necessarily dictate what ultimately happens moving forward. It can inform, but I don't know that it's the final decision maker. Does that make sense?
For another question on that, for having never gone through a review before. Did I touch it? How does this, how did, how does this compare to past evaluations with?
So previous, previous evaluation tools, and I can only speak to since 2020, so Terry, Dwana, feel free to, Kelly, jump in before then. But we evaluated the superintendent on goals and management limitations. If you'll remember, we had 11 management limitations, and within those 11 management limitations, some of them had 30 individual bullet points. So the, it, the tool that we utilized was, here's the data around whether or not we met the goals and whether or not the monitoring of management limitations was approved by the board, or, because we had not codified really what it looked like for a management limitation to be. On track or off track, and I, that's not the right.
You never quantified those.
Right. So it was, did the board approve it, or did they not approve it? And so it was, it was very ambiguous, and it ended up being a lot of conversation around areas of improvement that we had identified in previous evaluations, which were all, again, very much conversation-based. Like, you've been, you've been lacking in item A. We'd like to see an improvement in item A. Here are some possible success criteria around item A. And so there would be conversation around, you know, did that success criteria be, was it met? It was not as defined as this at all. It was, the right, the evaluation itself was a written paragraph, it was a conversation, and it was written in paragraph form, and it was.
And it was only those two. It was just the goals and the management limitations that were the evaluation.
Goals, management limitations, and areas of concern that have been brought up over the course of the tenure.
Okay.
Thank you. So Kim, just to clarify, in the evaluation document, in the back on the, on the third page where we have organizational strategy, the two focus areas, this list were examples that we brainstormed, as in, it could look like.
Right.
But they are not obligatory, but the expectation would be that ideally in our first check-in, or second, we would be hearing things like, I don't think the strategic plan is the right approach. Here is my approach to get to focus area one. Right? So I just want to make sure that that is kind of, examples could look like.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and I mean, you'll see in focus area two, in personnel and a culture of excellence, right? I mean, the first high-level item is human resources.
Yeah, I think one was just more specific.
That that is a concern district-wide, you know, and like you said, it's kind of anecdotally what we, what we are hearing in our community as we look at, at processes that are being, or policy that's being interpreted, and, and terminations and recruitment that is or is not happening. But it's very high level here. So I think ideally, like Terry spoke of before, we would, we would get some input on what you think, what he thinks the proper inputs are in addressing these concerns.
Hey, I have one just basic sort of implementation question, because this evaluation is going to span two individuals and monitoring that he likely would not have been responsible for. How do we factor that in to our weighting around monitoring? Because it feels a bit disingenuous to be doing an evaluation in February based on monitoring reports that would have happened in 2023, not under his watch, that then somehow become part of his accountability measure.
So yeah, the, for example, if you look at goal one, an interim goal one A, that is looking at the winter data, and then we're looking at fall-to-winter data. So we are not, we're not suggesting that we include any data prior to Dr. Roberts' arrival. Now, we know that decision-making has occurred prior to his arrival. That's going to impact success in these areas, of course, but.
I think we need to be prepared to articulate how we sort of parse that in a way that is not only fair and equitable, but speaks to, as a board, how we're going to utilize that in this context. Because I'd get really scared and nervous if I looked at this and said, well, gosh, the implementation and the strategies and the curriculum were all decided absent me, but even with the winter and/or the fall-to-winter target measures, I'm still being evaluated. So I think we, I think we just have to have a level of sensitivity around that.
Yeah.
And I also think that we need to be prepared to, in the context of sharing the evaluation and the tool, to help him understand that while this is weighted at 50%, we know that there is an X-factor in play over which you had no control. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And I think when, when we're monitoring those interim goals and goals, I would expect to hear in our next steps, or what's happening, what's going well or what's not happening or going well, pardon me, that there would be a commitment to change that would occur during that conversation that would reflect, I don't agree with our current path, and I need, I am going to make, make a recommendation that we change our current path. So without seeing some sort of recommended change in that monitoring process, I think that it would be safe to monitor based on what exists. Whereas if we hear from the superintendent a different recommendation, a drastically different approach, strategy, tactic in meeting the goal, then we, as a board, may want to take that into account for, for that item. What does everybody think?
So I'm trying to take that and put it in context. So if you think about our monitoring sessions today, both focused on, I don't like to say teacher accountability, but it was, because it's, it's a system of accountability around implementation on these monitoring issues. And so.
PD, time.
The expectation, though, would be that the next check-in, we would hear, because it very, it said they have to design and create, I forget the specific words, a systemic performance and accountability system. So if he agrees with that, what's the action step that he took to move that recommendation forward?
Yeah. Or here's my recommendation instead of that.
Right. I, I do think that we should make sure that that is how it is heard and understood, because sometimes, sort of left to your own devices, you may miss that as being part of how you articulate your vision moving forward as part of monitoring. So.
I'm happy to write something up to be included with both the goals and guardrails portion of this as a kind of under common understanding, or, or kind of the, the framework for which we'll be reviewing the measures.
You guys did good work. Thank you. And I would also underscore that while maybe it feels that, especially under personnel and culture of excellence, there may be a bit of randomness to what you identified, I do believe that, it's clear, there is a necessity to dig into this and feeling confident that there is a negotiation across, you know, those areas where we're holding him accountable, or if he believes there's a different direction, that we give ourselves the latitude to recognize that.
Thank you.
But it's spot-on, in my opinion.
So what I would, what I will do then is, I think Kelly, you and I can, or the committee can revisit the dates to make sure that those align. I will write up a additional information around the data themselves, the data for goals and guardrails, and how we will approach that from a monitoring standpoint. And then we can bring a revised version. Are we, is, should it just be on information only on the next meeting?
We can do that.
Okay.
I mean, I think if there is consensus on sort of the high-level shifts that either we'd like to see, or those things that we like to call out, if we can have consensus on that, then I think we're fine in putting it on information only.
Okay.
So it would be the three, the committee coming back together to.
Yes. And I welcome, if after you've had a chance to read this in more detail, or have any more questions or clarification, please don't hesitate to reach out to any one of us.
Yeah, I might offer as well on the optional, conduct board 360, that maybe we eliminate that for now for further discussion, so that we can gain some clarity about just the whole 360 policy, necessity, frequency, cadence, that I think just sets a larger context for why that's important. And when we embed it in policy, then it creates the right sort of understanding about the, its importance.
Will do. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Maria, Dwana, and Jenna for their committee report.
Yay! So I have lots of papers to pass around. Sure, it's yours. I don't know if I got them all in here. Hold on. Sorry. Get myself organized. Okay. So if you want to take one out of each pile, oh, now Kim's gone. Go to get it later.
Does she have one?
No, she does not. She'll just have to get the last one.
Okay, take one out of each pile.
Yes. So there's a lot of papers here. So our committee put together a entry plan outline, so kind of outline and proposal. We have several questions that we're seeking feedback on from the board as far as direction. But our committee was tasked with creating an entry plan, or is tasked with creating an entry plan.
So one out of that, one out of this. Sorry, Jenna.
Oh, you're getting them for everyone. You're so nice, Terry.
I'm just taking this out and passing it along.
Creating an entry plan designed to establish a set of intentional and inclusive activities that will guide the transition for the new superintendent into Des Moines Public Schools and the greater Des Moines community. And so we were tasked with meeting several goals, which includes coordinating the transition planning efforts with the interim superintendent, introducing the new superintendent to key community stakeholders, helping the new superintendent gain a deeper understanding of DMPS and the Des Moines community, its key leaders, attributes, and characteristics, and facilitating the organization of the training and support required for the new superintendent to be oriented to student outcomes-focused governance. So our overall vision for achieving this is to develop a written plan, which can be presented to Dr. Roberts upon his arrival, that will guide his orientation to our community. And so this plan, oh my goodness gracious, I'm so sorry.
We're good.
For all.
We're good. We're fine. Keep going.
All of the plan, Dwana, I think both Dwana and Terry had suggested a binder, and then Matt thought, maybe we should have a PDF, so it could be electronic as well. So our plan is to kind of be able to hand over a, you know, compiled set of information, but then also being there to help guide him along the way and making sure that he's referred out to the proper experts in different areas. So the way, the, starting with the district background, and please, Maria or Dwana, drop it, jump in at any point in time. Starting with district background, so our first proposal to achieve this is to work with Rosie and Phil to compile background documentation on the district. So some things that we thought would be important would be sort of an overview and history of the district, overview and history of Des Moines, and if there's any recent and relevant sort of news articles that could be compiled together so that he has something to refer back to. I think we all recognize that, and looking at sort of what he's going to be evaluated on, it's very clear that internal is definitely our focus. And so when we were really thinking about direction for this entry plan and having conversations with Matt about what is reasonable for external meetings, I think we want to be really conscientious of, of how much we're asking of him to be external right away, knowing it's important and there needs to be a plan for that. But I think internal stakeholders are the most important. And so Matt has, or shared that he has been working on a plan, and he did share sort of a contact list of individuals for internal stakeholders that he felt was important, and that, that is in your packet of information. This individual and group contacts, that was compiled by Matt as top sort of internal contacts, internal partners, I guess, for Des Moines Public Schools. So we valued when it came to internal stakeholders, really needing to spend time with leadership staff, so cabinet members, department leaders, union leaders, and administration, as well as developing a plan to get out and, and be in field, with the, in the field, on the ground. Visiting schools, transportation, janitorial, food and nutrition, metro, and our BFLs were stakeholders that we identified on the ground that needed to have a demonstrated action plan for him to connect with. And then through our DMPS connections, there's those community connections. So really looking at our apprenticeship partnerships, our school-based partners, like By Degrees and Avenue Scholars, Wallace Foundation, our, our student advisory committees, the businesses who provide support. So like our, our, some of our partners, the Mid-American Energy, some of our key business partners, that would be internal connection points that would be ideal to make, not necessarily us making external connection points. Numerous government and educational supports, and a lot of these are on Matt's spreadsheet that he provided. So city and community staff partners, or city and county staff partners, Department of Education, the superintendent network, School Administrators of Iowa, Urban Education Network, Council of Great City Schools, Heartland AEA, I put the Des Moines Police on there. And then nonprofit organizations, so really working through our community-school partnerships to identify some of the nonprofit organizations that provide support for our schools. So I think when we were talking about all of these contacts, we felt like this is not our area of expertise. I think it's fair expectation that we are tasking, we're saying, here's sort of everyone we want you to meet with. We need internal partners to develop a timeline and make this happen. These are not our, they may be our connection points by accident, because we live in this community as well, but are not necessarily our key connection points as board members. We're not intimately involved in the Des Moines Libraries partnership with Des Moines Public Schools, right? Doesn't make sense for us to be leading these conversations. So in thinking about sort of the internal stakeholder relationship, and when we met with Matt, it was, sort of felt like those were connection points that he and his team would be able to help us in making. Do people feel like that is the right sort of assumption, and then that we would approach this as saying, we kind of want a, you to come up with a, we kind of want a, you to come up with a, a what to do and a report back on how that's going.
I think that makes sense, because they can also put together the briefing materials that sort of help cue up, you know, why you're having this conversation, maybe key things that we've done together and key places of opportunity. So it feels like that really is a staff function, but informed by really good briefing information that doesn't send him anywhere cold, but rather helps to sort of connect the dots before he walks into the meeting.
I think the only place that I have a little bit of agita is around businesses. Because as we all know, it's so, the role that businesses are playing in supporting individual schools isn't necessarily completely understood at the district level. And so I just, I think that's a, a growth area that Matt and team are really building that out. But I just, there could be, I just want to, maybe there's a partnership, right, in, in outlining the role that some of these institutions are playing, how much money they're putting in different schools, maybe, I want to make sure that the story is told holistically. And I'm not sure that the district always has all of that information.
So I think this was a, that's a really good point. And I think you'll see under external stakeholders, there's a lot of overlap. So, so I think when we looked at external stakeholders, those to me, that, those are the partnerships that we need to own, or that we could play a more, you know, more intentional partnership, role in making sure that he has a smooth transition over to our external stakeholders. And there's several in sort of the list that you all helped to compile on the spreadsheet, as well as some of the different organizations that, or, you know, key players that, that we have discussed. There's overlap in both of those. So, you know, the, the ones that are overlaps, that were on Matt's list, that were identified, and also that we had identified as partners, are the ones that are italicized on our external stakeholder list. But if you want to pivot to external stakeholders, I think that's really on us to develop a plan that complements Matt's internal stakeholder plan, to orient Dr. Roberts to external stakeholders who are key to the district's success. And, you know, I think for, it's very hard to think about how to approach this, especially when we heard from Matt that a realistic expectation would be two external stakeholder meetings a week. He felt like that is like a manageable amount, which really sort of parses out the whole meeting process over time, or makes us think about meetings in a different way. Are there intentional places that we can make sure Dr. Roberts is, so that he's connecting with more than one person at a time? Or are there other strategic ways for us to be thinking about achieving that? I, I think it's our responsibility. So I do have an example of a prep sheet in there. I used Duana for a prep sheet example. But I agree with you, Terry. I think it's really critically important that there's an expectation internally, for internal stakeholder meetings, as well as for his external stakeholder meetings, that there's a, who are you meeting with? What is their title? Why are you meeting with them? And what's the background? And what do they look like? That is prepared for Dr. Roberts going into all of these meetings. And when we floated that by Matt, he was like, oh, yes, someone should have done that for me. So I think it would be really beneficial. And I put the goal on here, or we put the goal on here, as being two external stakeholder meetings a week, based off of Matt's feedback, but that would be our expectation of Dr. Roberts.
Hey, Jenna, just a quick thought. And again, when you sort of look at some of these, there are some, you know, natural groupings. So, you know, education, you know, funders, community partners, blah, 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 blah. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we could just, as opposed to sort of feeling the need to do them individually, group them in a way, so say for instance, you know, our education partners, Drake, you know, DMAC, Grandview, you and I, I would also add ISU. But if there, if there's a way to group them, so we invite all of our education partners at the same time. We give them each, you know, five minutes to talk about their relationship with the district, and then it becomes an exchange, so that we're not spreading him so thin, and requiring him to spend so much time on this, that we don't get to this. I mean, so it's, it's, it's going to be a really interesting balancing act, but I think the more that we can create the structure for the groupings, the easier it is for him to engage, you know, and this is really 30,000-foot level. This is not in-the-weeds, nitty-gritty stuff. This is really just an opportunity for an introduction. And if it's a breakfast, a lunch, or whatever.
And is your assumption that we'd, like, I don't know, whether it's FLUR, or it's at a school, or something like that, you'd invite people, who, would the board members, what role would board members play? What members would staff play? And it could be that the staff is given the guidance, like invite this group, and that board helps amplify or follow up based on the relationships we have?
Yeah. You could either do that, or based on availability. I mean, there are a variety of different things that we could do. But I do think that with some of the key external partners, it really is the board taking the lead for introduction, and creating that space for welcoming, thanking, and then turning it over. And, you know, you can opt into as many as you want to, or identify those that are important to you. But it feels like those groupings just make it more manageable. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I think, I'm just going to say out loud, I think I'm in agreement, if the approach is good politics, small P,
Yeah.
right, which is that we're acknowledging, let's just take college presidents as an example, college and university, we're acknowledging you as critical partners to DMPS.
Correct.
We're also acknowledging that this is a, a, a leader in their first month, who isn't prepared to have in-depth conversations.
Yeah.
And.
Strictly introductory.
And they're, they have the choice to come or not come. And, and yet, we're extending the.
The invitation.
Invitation to say you matter to us.
Yeah.
Jenna, what do you think?
I think it's great. That works for me.
And didn't we create, or we have an introductory letter?
Yep.
That will go out to these individuals who are having these meet and greets. There's something that comes out.
Out ahead of time. They know what to expect. And in that letter, you'll put some.
I mean, it's just a very high level.
That's just something that we thought made sense. So we would all be communicating the same message. So we're not, got seven different letters going out there, but we've got one, that if we're sending them, if, so if I'm taking the lead on NAACP, then my letter's going to look the same as Kelly's letter, if she's taking the lead on UEN. So then that way, we're making that introductory thing there, too. But I also think the fine balance is going to be between what he's wanting to do as well, because I imagine there's going to be some either community conversations, or things that he's going to want to have, or he's going to want to talk to individuals, too. So there's going to be this fine balance between our listing, and knowing some of the things that he's going to want to do, too, that we'll have to have that fine balance with as well.
Well, and there could be people that get hit up twice.
Yeah.
One's in sort of the macro discussion, and others in both the macro and micro.
So Terry, just to clarify, you see our door, our job as really just opening the door, and then from there on, that's, that's.
Yeah, I think we, we need to be thoughtful about sort of who the, the high level, if you will, prioritization of grouping should be, and who's included therein. But I also think, like, say for instance, United Way. United Way has an executive committee. The Greater Des Moines Partnership has an executive committee. Do you just create an opportunity for those, you know, natural alignments and those meetings that are already taking place, for him to show up?
Mm-hmm.
That way, you don't have to, you know, I mean, there, there may be the reason for us to, you know, invite Dan Houston and some of the, you know, larger employers. But there may be an opportunity for us just to use an existing meeting as the introductory opportunity, and he.
We discuss that, too.
Yeah. Because I feel like we, we, we need to use as many naturally occurring events as possible, so that we're not.
Agreed.
Feeling the need to either reinvent the wheel, or invent the wheel.
It's almost like going back to when we did community input for the superintendent.
Engagement versus outreach.
Engagement versus outreach.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
One question, and Jen, I just was talking to the partnership staff today about this, to Tiffany and Jay. So they made me aware, and Terry, you're probably aware, the superintendent has a seat on the Board of Directors.
Correct.
Are there other?
I think United Way, at one point, I don't know if that's a permanent seat, or if that's an invited seat.
Got it.
I feel like the partnership is permanent. I don't know United Way.
So there might be, are there others that we, you want to list?
Yeah.
That might be like that. I don't know if there's other.
I don't think quite yet, but UEN, I assume pretty soon, when I fall off, because UEN's steering committee has a makeup of four board members, four superintendents. When one falls out, like, say, the, when I, my term is done, then the superintendent would come on as steering.
Gotcha.
Committee. So at some point. Yes.
So the next category, one of the categories are on politics. You'll see that our policy work's already put together, sort of a proposal for our state and federal leadership. One other area that, that I did want to lift up is really our city and county leadership, and how we choose to connect with them. And maybe that is an appropriate small group situation, Terry, of some, some way, or what makes sense there. But I think that that's a group that we cannot overlook.
County supervisors, too.
County, yes. The county supervisors and the city council. And how are we thinking about strengthening those relationships at this time? So.
And I think in that particular case, that's, that's a morning coffee meet and greet.
Yep.
It feels like there is a place for the introductory work again, but also there's going to be a place for the deeper work. And I think right now, this is all introductory, right?
Is, this might be a silly question, but if we did a morning count, if we did a morning coffee meet and greet with city, and is that, does that need to be posted in public and everything? Or is that, okay, so that's a posted meeting?
Yeah.
Then in the communication strategy field, we do already have sort of an existing communications plan from the work that Wixton Company did. I put that kind of down below, under their proposal. So I think we just need to circle back with Phil, and make sure that in his welcome documents, he has sort of district talking points. There's sort of a clear rollout strategy. And then, and here's where we added sort of some of those existing events that could just be added on, too. So like, you know, the Prairie Meadows Lunch, right, will be in July, I think, right? So how do you make sure that those are on, or we need to make sure those things are on Dr. Roberts' radar and calendar, and that he feels prepared to attend them? Other groups that regularly meet, you know, the Rotary Clubs, the Des Moines Club, the Chambers of Commerce. So pulling together sort of a plan and calendar for him to attend those events as well.
Maybe as an invited guest of someone to Rotaries, and then as he gets deeper into the work, the keynote speaker at, you know, AM, noon Rotary, whatever. So it feels like, Jackie, you're in Rotary?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not anymore.
Rotary drop out.
But again, trying to, you know, trying to identify, you know, key folks in the community that we could reach out to, just to invite him to go as their guest. He gets introduced in that, like, check the box, move on. Does that make sense? I don't, I, I just don't feel like we want to overcomplicate it.
No.
But I also feel like there are, again, places where we need to be super intentional that we're convening, versus places where he's being invited as a guest, and he's being exposed.
Yeah. Jenna, just one thought on the communication strategy. It came up today when we were talking about the other event.
Station event?
Yeah, just making sure that it's, at some point, whoever just mentioned, the synergy between what we are recommending and his ideas.
Yeah.
And how those two things sync up. And that might be the same with the communications and messaging, right? So Phil's got a starting point, but making sure that the superintendent actually agrees with the, the messaging and communications framework. So.
So let me go on to the last thing, and then I want to circle back to that, which is the SOFG. So Maria's already reached out to Cindy about making sure that there's an individual orientation for SOFG, with her and some coaching, and can make sure that that gets up and running. We also discussed, when Duana and I met, about our retreat, that I assume we'll do, we do an annual SOFG retreat, which will also be a place where there will be a lot of orientation occurring as well.
We're hoping to get that date solidified before we leave tonight.
See, look at that. So I think some questions that we had, and Duana, Maria and I really talked through our thoughts, but I'm interested in everyone's. You know, again, I'm so glad, because my number one thing is attempt to plug in as many existing events as possible. I don't think we want to get in the business of planning a whole bunch of coffees and events, if we think that there are, like, I think probably the city and county warrant one, maybe there's a couple other spots. Is there any other consensus places where you feel like a special coffee is a better outreach approach, or the best outreach approach? Or do we just schedule a few and invite everyone and see who comes? What, what do we want to do?
I think it feels better when it's targeted, because people have a reason for showing up. It's an education for our education partners, or the legislature, or, you know, city and county. I mean, and what I would also offer is, those don't get offered to everybody.
Right.
You know, we're really specific about who we invite in for specific events. But the other folks are handled in ways that is respectful, but not necessarily with the kit glove that we would handle others with, if that makes sense.
So should our committee go back and identify a few buckets, and then maybe try to look at some dates, and we try to agree as a board to divide and conquer those, where a couple of us, or one of us at least, will be at each one, sort of hand-holding and, and helping?
You know, it feels like community partners, especially to your point around Vanessa's group or whatever, he shows up at their monthly.
Yeah, exactly. 100% check.
Yeah, that's nothing special. He shows up and.
That is special.
It is, it is special, but I'm saying it's not anything we have to organize, whatever.
Yep. Just get it on the calendar.
Do we think that some, some of.
These groups or entities might already have a plan of inviting him in before we even.
They already have.
Yeah, they're, they're already trying, attempting to do that, and I think we're sort of warding people off.
But I think that's really, I mean, I would say that's one of.
We have to be strategic around this.
And the staff has to understand the strategy.
Absolutely.
Like.
Absolutely. So the scheduler, and probably Phil.
Rosie will be doing all those.
Yeah. Doing some blocking and tackling. But yeah, I think, you know, our plan takes precedent, and other things, maybe not, at least for right now.
So kind of with, sorry, I'm, I'm jumping ahead. But Rosie, are you helping in this transition? Because will he be coming in and hiring an assistant right away? Is there going to be an assistant hired for him when he comes in?
I, I think that's a little up in the air. I think for right now, Tanya's doing some work, Rosie likely will do some work. But how he determines sort of his staff will be, you know, at his discretion. But at least in the interim, we have people who can coordinate and organize.
How do you see accountability for these pieces? Like, is this a standing, is this something that our committee's going to continue to push forward through the end? Is this something that we're developing a plan, and you all are discussing it at leadership meetings with Dr. Roberts? How do you see the execution of this transition occurring?
Yeah, it, it feels like, you know, this is, this is a board, this is the board's attempt to get him in front of key leaders, influencers, et cetera, in the community. And so I would hope in that regard, he would accept our recommendation for, you know, either those events that we hold as introductory, or those places that we recommend as important or obligatory. And then from there, I think it's really staff doing their part. And we also have to recognize that, I mean, I was looking at the staff list, and a lot, too.
I'm sure. And he'll, he'll get there anyway. I mean, you're going to. It's on, it's, he's, he's going to get to all of those stakeholders.
Yeah. But.
But I think that's why we have to be mindful of our external setup, and making sure that we aren't trying to set him out on all of these meetings, because we do want his focus to be internal.
Yeah, I think the better we can be at recognizing already existing meetings where he shows up, you know, again, like the United Way Executive Committee, or the Partnership Executive Committee, or things like. or things like that, utilizing existing meeting cadence to just sort of, by the way, we, we need 15 minutes of your time. So recognizing and identifying those seems to me to be sort of the low hanging fruit part of this. And then the things that we need to organize is sort of the level up of how we group individuals and/or entities. I don't know. I, I just, I don't want us to be consumed by this. I want us to be thoughtful about if it were me, and I'm coming into a community, where, where are the places that either we must do or can't miss? Being sensitive to sort of the political winds.
Jenna, Duana, and Maria, how can we help? I think, I would just say, having just sat on a call with Jenna about a potential foundation gala, you've got a lot going on, and so is there a way that you can? And maybe the three of you just need to sit for a bit and ponder the execution of this and what role you need us to play, so we're all rowing in the same direction and being helpful?
I'd be happy to reduce my thoughts to writing and get that to you just as a placeholder. And then you can figure out what you want to do with that, and if there's a role for me to play in facilitating those meetings, I'm happy to do that.
I say we reconvene. My, I can pick up now where you've left off if I need to. Things are slowing down for me again, so.
Congratulations on a great celebration.
Thank you, thank you. So I can pick up in my mind. I'm thinking if, since we've got this feedback, we go back and dwindle the list, don't make it too hard, like it's already said. Find those meetings that already exist, get them locked into those, and then just kind of go with who we can have, start making those introductions. But I think we just need to reconvene. I don't think it'd take us.
No, I don't think so either.
Too long to go back through and put something together.
Who is managing his schedule then?
I think Tanya is for now.
So it'd be a matter of just get it on the schedule, and then.
Yep.
Maybe if we have just a spreadsheet, check it off the list that there's, that it's on the schedule, and then.
Just a process. I'm sure maybe Tanya's thought about this, but for all of those things that are coming in, so we just don't lose sight of it or insult anybody.
She just keeps a running list.
Keeps a running list, so that, you know, you can eyeball it, Terry, and just make sure that you're keeping an eye on that.
Yep.
A running list and a, I think, a running response too, of like, you know, we, we see these are.
Thank you, we got it.
Yep, exactly.
We'll get there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So are you currently doing that? Are you managing his requests?
I'm not, no, but we'll ask Tanya to do that. Rosie, will you ask her to do that? Thank you.
And then who, and then Rosie, we can work with you on like scheduling breakfasts or something like that, if that is what we do, you can help us get everything secured and done.
Perfect.
And then circle back with Phil. Is that something that someone wants to take on the rollout of the communications?
Also mentioned, not to forget the news media, and how that piece gets rolled into sort of the larger discussion. And he said he'd be, he'd be happy to chat with you further about the requests.
Is he putting together a proactive plan, Terry?
He has. So right now, much of what we've been focused on with media is pretty much what we're asking Tanya to do is just track, and then figure out sort of where we fit things in, yeah.
But so he's gonna just.
He said one or more general talk show formats, other media that will want to do interviews, and just trying to figure out sort of what the sequencing needs to be and how we prioritize. So I think Jenna, I think that he's been talking, in addition to the work that Wickstead did for us, that he's been having some discussion with Strategic America as well about how best to align all of that, so.
So safe to say Phil has it, or do we want to see something?
What I would say is circle back to him and ask how that incorporates into our, you know, larger transition plan. I know he already did sort of a Zoom interview with Samantha.
What about internal stakeholder meetings? Is it safe to say someone will have it? Or do we want to see a strategy for that rollout?
I think we should ask Matt to, yeah, well, I, we can ask for a strategy for that rollout, but I think maybe we can trust that they're going to know what the internal things are, and we just manage external and let them handle that.
I mean, that to me feels most appropriate, but I don't know how much we want to make sure. And are there any things, I mean, are there any, the only other thing on here would be if there are certain stakeholders we want to make sure that he connects with, that we're elevating that to Matt to make sure that, that that happens.
I think maybe once we put together sort of our plan of action and our groupings, that will help Matt to be more crystal clear about any overlap or any places where we've got that covered, so you don't have, have to handle that.
I think the only maybe question to ask John Ketchatory or Christopher Rance. I think what Terry said about the kind of five-minute ICU is the right strategy for a lot of the meetings. Maybe with the exception of some of the recommendations that John Ketchatory made. And so it, you know, you want to walk into those types of meetings really prepared. And so whether or not it's a call from Dr. Roberts, or an email that says, looking forward to meet with you. I know it's going to be a couple of months. I just, I want to make sure that there's a, that's not a meeting. That's a kind of quick handshake, I don't think, but I would look for other people's thoughts on that.
Well, considering what Matt just said tonight about his biggest need, I would assume not either, but.
So is that, are you saying then the direction?
I'm saying we come from leadership, the direction would be do whatever they think is best when it comes to building strong relationships with.
Correct, because I think you want to be prepared walking into those types of meetings, and so that will take some time. And so in the interim, you can always like shoot a quick email, or say, hi, I'm here, I can't wait to meet in a couple of months, if that's the protocol that John and Christopher recommend. I just, I think there's some preparation that's going to go into those meetings.
Yeah, I think that when I think about the legislative delegation, it feels like there are groupings because the conversations are different.
Yeah. I think one, you can get on the books pretty quickly.
I agree.
Thank you for all of your work on this committee, members.
Thank you.
This is great. It's exciting.
This week, Jenna.
Thank you. So. Yeah, if there's nothing else, then we would like to schedule a retreat with the governing body. We're thinking end of July.
May I ask a question? It came up at our planning session. There's usually a second board meeting in August?
There tends to be a second meeting. There's not a formal second meeting ever scheduled in August. We almost always have a second meeting in August for personnel recommendations, where we, you know, it's pretty much five minutes.
Even a call in if you had to.
And approve, okay, yeah, so that teachers can be hired and start on the first day of school.
Great, thank you.
Are you thinking Friday, Saturday? What's your goal date?
I think we want to give ourselves options, especially given vacation schedules, et cetera, and weekends. We talked a little bit about, I mean, if you could do a Friday, Saturday, or if you could do two evenings. I mean, I just think we've got to, we've got to be open to what works, you know, for everyone.
Yeah, I think ideally, we were thinking a Friday, three to, three to nine, and then an all-day Saturday, if, if we can make that happen. If that doesn't, if that's not going to work, and we can do, you know, three to nine, two evenings.
I'll start. I mean, 28, 29 works for me. I don't.
I have class that weekend, so the 14th and 15th and 28th and 29th, I have class those weekends.
Yeah, and.
Of July.
I'm like out of town every weekend.
Okay, is August 4th, 5th?
I'm out of town.
Oh, okay. So let's go back into July and look at Tuesday, Wednesday, potentially.
Is that 27, 28?
So we have a board meeting on the 11th, would the 18th and 19th?
That does not work for me.
Okay.
What about 19th and 20th?
19th and 20th.
Is, are both of those days out for you, Jackie?
Sorry, it's only seven days my kids are here.
I thought it was, oh, where are you going?
I'm going to Minneapolis.
Oh, I'm going to Chicago.
26, 27?
Those two work for me.
Evening, right?
Evening, like if we could do three to nine? Or four to nine? I know three is sometimes hard.
I could do four to nine, both days, honestly.
25th and 26th of July.
Oh, 26, 27.
26th and 27th.
Yeah.
I could do that too.
I'm a tentative.
Tentative?
I'm a tentative.
Okay. Well, I think we're looking for something that all of us can be.
And, no, I know that. I mean, maybe we can identify a second option. I just, I've, I've got like eight days when all my kids are here, so I, I don't know what the plan is. So can we potentially look at a second option?
Okay.
What about August?
August 2, 3?
I leave town, I'm gone the first through the eighth.
What about the 9th and 10th?
I leave for DC the 10th.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be more helpful if we all just kind of write down dates that we know?
Let's just keep, keep it this, keep doing it this way.
What about 16, 17 at office?
What's summer graduation?
Do we know?
I don't know what the dates. I've got it written down somewhere, because I'm going to do that. I think it's the 20th. I'll check. I have it somewhere.
16, 17?
That works for me. That works for me. Okay, so, and I, I'm happy to come back to the group. I just need like 24 hours to.
Yeah, totally get it.
So right now, we're holding July.
26 and 27.
26, 27, as well as August.
16, 17.
16, 17?
Yep.
And both of them would be, either of them would be three to eight.
Nine.
Three to eight. Do we need to check on?
I thought we said four to nine.
It's three to nine. I thought she said initially.
I think ideally, three to nine, if we can't, if you can't get out of work until four. Is it, would that be both nights, or could you?
On the 26th, I could.
Okay.
On the 27th, I could. I think 16 and 17 might be best dates that I'm, as I'm looking through.
Okay.
Maybe we could shoot for the 16th and 17th, that'd be.
Do we need to check on consultant availability? Do you want to, just in case, look at the 18th, 19th, or 20th? So you have a second option?
Are we looking in July or August?
Well, I think, Duana, does July 26, 27 not work for you? Okay.
Yes.
So August 18, 19?
18, 19, 20 work for me.
The weekend?
Of August. I'm just, yeah.
18, 19 work for me too, so if we just hold, just in cases.
So 18th is the Friday, 19th is the Saturday?
I would say fair. It is. I think I have concert tickets.
If you're going to Dixie Chicks, it's on the 19th.
Yeah.
We're, we'll be done before the Dixie Chicks concert.
I think I have them Friday night too.
What about Thursday, the 17th, and Friday, the 18th? So you're not even dealing with Saturday?
Thursday and Friday. She thinks she has tickets on Friday.
I think that's, um.
If you have tickets on Friday, then the August 16, 17 dates won't work.
I know, that's what I just said. I don't think, I think that I have concert tickets.
So are we currently holding?
August 16, 17, three and/or four to nine.
Did we say no to the July 26, 27?
Let's start there.
Okay, we're saying no to July.
Maybe it'll be a miracle.
I think it doesn't, yeah.
We're going to start with August 16, 17. I will reach out to our coaches and.
Okay, while people have their calendars out?
What about the 15th and 16th, that Tuesday, Wednesday, if we needed to have a quick board meeting to approve that aligns, we don't have to add another meeting?
Yes.
August 15, 16? I mean, you don't have to always have a meeting on Tuesday. You could have a meeting whenever you want to. But I was just trying to back it up a little bit in the week, so we're not getting so close to the weekend that it does become problematic.
That's good for me. Kim, can I ask another scheduling question?
Yep.
So I talked to Phil Rader, and I had this idea, but it only works if there's a few other school board members interested. The State Fair Parade is on August 9th, and I had suggested the idea of maybe Dr. Roberts and one of the new branded vehicles that have the new, you know, come here, become here. And any school board members, any staff that were interested, Dr. Roberts. I just thought it was a different way to engage the community. It's kind of fun. It's a long walk.
Riding.
Exactly, and you can, right? There are riding options, but would, I, I don't want to do it if it's just me. And so like, are there three other volunteers that would do it with me? Phil likes the idea.
August 9th?
It's August 9th. Parade begins at 6:15. And, I mean, it's a thing. It's, it's a long parade, candy, and I don't.
6:15.
When you.
Put a school bus up in there.
PM.
You can hand candy. You can't throw candy.
Yeah, there's all these different rules, but like, I think we'll make it fun, and so who is, I want to make sure I can say.
Know what time it is?
Well, 6:15, but.
Okay, I can do that.
You have to line up early, but you can always just kind of, like, there'll be staff there, and I'll be there early to, you know, claim. I mean, it's all, it's such a well-organized machine. So I've got one, yes, Maria, Kim.
Possible.
Okay.
Riding.
So I at least, you're not riding.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Riding.
You, Terry, okay, so.
Or roller blade.
I'm just going to say that I have one, two, and hopefully a third from some of these possibles.
That's not how I feel when I get back, we don't get back to like two, so.
Okay.
So you'll remind us, Jackie, and we'll confirm.
I will, and.
Phil will work out the logistics and the details for staff.
And Rosie, maybe you could just put on your list, if there's, like, I need to think through any staff that are working that might be interested, you know, not, not people that are on contract, but, you know, put on t-shirts and.
But you know what I mean? I think about, you know, Labor Day Parade and all kinds, and, you know, usually there's a school bus in there, and so, I mean, I think you can make it as bigger, as little as you want to.
Yeah, and this assumes Dr. Roberts will, will do it. But he's a former Olympian, so I think he can manage a couple mile walk.
So does that mean that we have to keep up with him if he's walking?
You've got to keep up, so the car behind you does not hit you. That's the strategy. Okay, thank you for indulging me.
Half steps.
All right, friends, it's 8:52. Anything else?
One other quick thing, and I'll just send a quick email around. So we'll need to, and I need to confirm this with Miriam, reaffirm Matt's new salary effective July 1, which I think, and I need to go back and look at the contract, but I think we had already identified sort of what it will be, unless we want to recommend a change. And then I also just need to discuss anything else that we wish to consider, given his. given his work this year.
So then we need to schedule a closed session?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I will...
And that likely will need to be sooner versus later because that goes into effect July 1. But I just want to confirm with Miriam how deep, how wide our discussions, deliberations need to be. There's a piece of this that's static unless we're recommending that he just get what the administrators get, which typically I think is what happens, but I don't even know what that recommendation was for the year.
It was on tonight's agenda, yeah.
Okay.
Our, so our first board meeting in July?
Yeah.
July 11.
July 11.
Mm-hmm. Do we forward, what do we have on the agenda of significance?
We will have one, um, we will have one monitoring report, goal three. Um, that is going to be the most significant item on the agenda and more details to come regarding celebration, passing of the guard, roasting, gift, acknowledgement, all of those sorts of things.
So it is more of a thank you than it is a forward-looking celebration? I think where I was going with this is, is there an opportunity even on that, after that board meeting to, to knock out some of the external stakeholders? That's all. So we're good.
We were hoping to have a social of some sort after the board meeting to honor Matt.
Perfect, thank you.
And we're still knocking out those details.
We're working on those details, so. Just, perfect.
Okay, great meeting.
All righty, thanks, everybody. I know, I'm so glad we have...